All right, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I do just want to say I had some conversations with Ms. Bias on some of the finance report on just shifting payments from expected budget. And so, just letting you guys know, that was some of the conversations that we had on the remaining funds from Prop S. And so, that was in there. So, we talked about those. It's just a matter of when we expected the payments or what the outflow from one year to the next, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Onto informational items with Dr. Hoffman.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so tonight, I have the privilege of talking about our student interventions programs, and I'm going to make that plural. We have several different programs that factor into this evening's information, and they span from ELL, so our English language learners, migrant students, homeless students, behavior, and gifted. And one of the things that I think is great about RPEC is we believe in really looking holistically at the whole child. So, you see a variety of things covered, and we're going to share some of that information with you this evening about those different programs. So, first, there are some pictures up here. A couple of those are from our first annual World Fest that you might have seen on social media. That, at Creekmore Elementary School, all of our families in the EL program, K-12, as well as staff members, were all invited to come and participate. Several families and staff members shared about their culture or their heritage. Some had food. It was a wonderful event. That particular couple of pictures has our families, the families from China and from Mexico originally, again, just sharing a bit about their culture. You can see students involved as well as relatives. And then, also, we have students at our secondary who are working on their writing goals, and they are collaborating about their writing, specifically about mechanics, tricky for native speakers of English alone, someone learning our language. And then, also, down below, you see pictures of our gifted students, in elementary particularly. And those students are discussing their Think Law lesson, which is about the pros and the cons of a city banning plastic bags. So, just engaging in some very relevant project-based thinking and inquiry, so pretty fun, and they're definitely very motivated whenever I'm in those classrooms. I'm going to go ahead and, there, thank you. All right, so members of our review team include Dr. Volker, Dr. Barr, myself, Allison Scott. She's our student support coordinator. She's filled a variety of roles, but she is somebody who really provides that wraparound look at our students who struggle with behavior. Sarah Hand and Francisco Santiago are our EL teachers for the district. And Becca Huber and Lena Quinlan represent LEAP, our gifted education program. And Catherine Kerr is our district school psychologist, who many of you know. So, some highlights about our different programs. In general, our interventions are provided district-wide via a multi-tiered system of support. Basically, what that means is we don't wait for a student to fail. We wrap around students in lots of different ways. We let data and teacher input, which is data in and of itself, derive a lot of what we do in order to know who needs what. That not only includes academics, but also behavior, and now, social and emotional is something we continue to journey on as well. It's a very proactive way in which we want to support all students and the whole student. So, specifically on here, a few things to know about our English language program, our English learner program. We do have certified teachers. They have T-Sol degrees, teachers of English, speakers of other languages. And we have a bilingual teacher associate, and she is bilingual in the language of Spanish. She has been incredibly helpful. We added her two years ago, I believe, and she's a wonderful addition to the program. So, thank you all for that. We screen all of our students via the home language survey and a records review. So, it's required that districts screen students who are coming into the district for potential language needs and potential eligibility to receive services. And so, we do that via form during the registration process that everybody fills out. And then, also, sometimes we get records from schools that have that same information, but it looks a different way. So, we maybe have test results from language assessments and whatnot, but that is how we screen and fulfill that obligation. So, then, we give a language screening itself, like an assessment, to our students. It's pretty short. Both of our teachers are trained in that, and that determines whether or not they're eligible and need language proficiency services to help them develop additional language proficiency in English. Our models are different at our elementary versus our secondary. At K-5, we have what's called a Center of Excellence, or what we call that. It's housed at Creekmore Elementary School, has been now for a little while. Prior, it was at Timber Creek. And that is where any parents or any of our students who are eligible for services, they are able to be transported over to that site, and they receive access to our EL teacher at any point in the day that they need her. Now, that's scheduled. It's not like it's just in reaction, but basically, we've been able to provide additional minutes when students need them because we have a full-time teacher and they're full-time at that school. So, that's been a nice approach that we had developed years ago. In fact, a few years ago, in a program review, we actually shared with you that our State Department came and said, hey, you guys are one of the top-performing, growing schools as far as language proficiency in the state. What are you doing? So, it was a really nice thing. We had just made that shift over there a few years prior. At secondary, our students' needs are a bit different, and scheduling looks different. We have a great approach there, and that's site-based. So, we don't have a student, or students receive those services in their schools of residence. Again, our secondary EL teacher provides those through a dedicated class and provides consult supports anytime a student might have a need or is struggling in a class as well. Teachers have access to both of our EL teachers, both at elementary and at secondary. All right, and then, access tests. Some of you may be familiar with that term, but that is a test that's going on right now. It is a requirement of districts that any student who is eligible for EL services, we must assess them. And that test basically gives us additional information to see how much from one year to the next they grow in different areas, speaking, reading, writing, and listening within the English language. And obviously, that's a pretty important piece in order to be successful in academics, which are all in English, so. All right. So, gifted is our next slide. So, this program encourages our students to basically find their gifts. It helps them to assume that internal understanding of themselves and that responsibility for organizing, fulfilling their potential. So, students do have to meet qualifying levels on certain assessments. There are four areas in RPEC that we assess. The state does, we follow state guidelines, and in order to participate in LEAP, they have to meet on three of, in three of those areas according to the criteria. And we have referrals also that can help a student enter into that process. Both parents and teachers themselves can refer students that they believe have characteristics of giftedness. And then, universally, we also screen all fourth graders and see if there are any students that maybe didn't have that referral process in the queue, but we might see academic potential that we want to also refer to go through that process. And parents have to give permission, of course, for that. And then, just multiple pathways for kids to pursue giftedness. A student might be extraordinarily gifted in math, but not quite as in reading. They might have other areas or talents. So, it's really a program that tries to help them find their areas of giftedness and to pursue those. And then, our academic and behavioral intervention programs, and particularly, we're going to focus on behavior this evening. So, data-driven decision-making is a part of all of that. Universal screening as well happens in academics three times a year, but also in behavior. We have some different mechanisms to do that. So, we do use building-wide information and discipline data monthly. We sit down, our principals sit down with their teams to do so. Our behavior intervention team also works to support buildings in that process. So, there is a universal screener that's beginning. It has an acronym with a lot of S's in it, S-R-S-S-I-E. And we're very excited about that because what we know is, again, we don't believe in waiting to find out. We want to know who is struggling, even if it's not necessarily a parent, so. And then, tiered interventions within our building, MTSS, that acronym I mentioned on the second slide, but that, again, is just a way in which we use that data to make good decisions, to wrap around kids and support our teachers with what they're trying to do every day to do that. Supportive structures related to this, social and emotional curriculum is in going on in EC through eighth grade. That's called Second Step. We also are onboarding a 912 resource. It's under review, I apologize. It's called Move This World. Possible implementation next year, so it's early in the semester, so we will see how that review goes. Our secondary staff is involved in that. And then, building student assistance teams. Sometimes, those are called SAT teams. Sometimes, those are called BSAT teams. Sometimes, they're called CAREs, as well as our district-level MTSS team. They wrap around and look at that information and figure out what schools might also need for additional resources. Sometimes, it's just another head in the mix with that expertise in behavior, so. Tiered plans. So, basically, every student can be different, and we want to wrap around what is their need, what does that look like, and what is the strategy or the intervention that's going to actually help them to learn whatever is the skill that they're missing and instead acting out. We have our high supports program. Our highest support program is called Success Academy, as you all know. And sometimes, our students, that's the best place where they get a very dedicated, small-class size, a lot of wraparound supports there. And then, we have many who transition, or have begun to transition back, and I might share that a little bit later on a slide. And then, specialized personnel. So, we have behavior interventionists across the district. We have school counselors in every building. We have mental health professionals across the district. We have a district school psychologist and a student support coordinator. We also have focus facilitators in every building as well. An additional piece that's going to, that's going on at the secondary, it's just beginning the semester, it's called Rethink. And this is a program where, starting small, but students who, if they have engaged in a fight and they have disciplinary consequences for that, instead of serving a full five days of OSS, they will be able to have the opportunity to elect part of that to be out of school, part of that to be in school, but they have to participate in some educational pieces. Now, obviously, we work with their parents on that. Not all students might choose to do that, but I know the secondary is very excited to see where and how our students respond to that. So, more information, I'm sure, can be available in the future. All right, so down to our scorecard. I'm going to talk about just a couple of things on this because the other three measures are actually going to be addressed through the goals. So, measure one is unique to the scorecard, and it has to do with that access test I mentioned earlier that our English language learners take once a year. And we had set a goal of about 70%, and instead, we hit 59%. So, we're nearing that, but we haven't quite made that. It is something that we know is sometimes difficult to move the needle, especially the older, that our students, the shorter amount of time that we have them, it takes a little longer for us with them to be able to move that needle. So, we want to go ahead and continue to track that, but we are very excited that more than half of our students were able to improve their access test score. And then, on number three, we have the percentage of our LEAP students that are indicating on their student survey that the program just makes them feel excited about learning, right? Because that's such an underpinning of what then they, how they feel about school. And we had a really good return on that. Seventy-five percent of our students said, yep, I feel really excited because of LEAP program about school in general, so. All right, so then, our next slide is going to focus on our other three scorecard measures, which are also our goals. So, by, the first goal was that by winter of this year, this past year, the percentage of students receiving EL services who improve their percentile in reading or are already at the norm or above on NWA would increase to 50%. And that goal was met. Fifty-five percent of our students met that. One point of interest might be that it primarily includes our elementary students in this percentage, and that is because in winter, it started during COVID, but we elected to focus on teaching when we had them, and so, we didn't do a winter assessment on most of our secondary students. So, you're going to see in our proposed goals that we are going to propose looking at our spring assessment information from NWA because all K-12 students do take that, so more to come on that. Our second goal relates to our gifted program, and again, wanting to hear the voice of our students. We think that's a very powerful piece. I think we talked about that two years ago in our program review. And so, particularly on the survey, they, our teachers have been tracking how our students feel that the gifted program helps them learn how to handle when things feel tough. And let's face it, the last few years, for all kids, things have felt pretty tough between COVID and everything else that's happened. But in general, sometimes our students who are gifted also experience some difficulty with that realm of things in handling difficulties with peers or just social and emotional things. And so, they really have wanted to dig and attract that. That goal, we had hoped to reach 49%, and they actually reached 78% of our students. They've been taking a very dedicated approach to that in their class, and so, we're really excited about that. And you'll see, they do want to maintain that, and we'll talk more on the next slide. Our third goal, we did not meet, and so, that is related to students who are on a tier-three behavioral support plan. And we wanted to see if they could improve their percentile in reading and/or again, be at or above the expected norm on NWA. We wanted to reach 60%, and instead, the percentage was 44 of our students that were in the data pool were able to do that. Now, a couple of points of note, when we looked and we saw which students actually had scores all the way through the two-year period, only nine kids were in the mix, and they were all elementary. Now, those nine kids are important, and so, we were very, we dug into that, and what we noticed is that six of them, maybe they returned to buildings or tiered off a plan, meaning they were in Success Academy, and they actually improved their behaviors enough to go back to the building and/or tier off a plan. And then, 66% of those actually, we are starting to see those academic gains. And so, that's exciting, but it is only nine kids, and we want a way to capture more kids in K-12. So, you're going to see that proposed on the next slide. All right, so the goals that we're, current goals that we're proposing are these. Similarly, they address all three programs. EL, we would like to see our students improve their percentile in reading and/or score at the 50th percentile. That's maintaining the last goal, but what we know is by shifting this to the spring assessment window, we'll have a good K-12 look at all of our students, and we really want to maintain that because we do know the older students come to us. It can be, it can take longer to move that needle, and so, we want to make sure as they are gaining their language proficiency, that it's starting to translate on the reading assessment that is all in English. Goal two would be related to our gifted students, and we want to, again, maintain that area on their survey where they tell us how they feel like our program is helping them to handle when things feel tough or they have problems with peers. So, you'll see that 85% of our students is what the team felt like would be appropriate. That's an increase from what percentage they saw this past survey, but they do feel like it's important enough to wrap around our gifted students in this way, and they'd like to continue to track that. And then, our third goal is related to our tier-three behavioral students, and we would like to see them improve again to that 50th percentile. We're going to aim for that again. We're moving to, we're proposing to move to the spring assessment window, so it involves all K-12 students, and we're very hopeful that we are going to be able to move that. I will say that we continue to work on refining our behavioral interventions because we know when we have kids, especially at Success Academy or at that tier-three level, their behavior is certainly impeding things, right? We want them to make that academic progress, but we also know we've got to address the behavior. So, by doing that, as they start to show those increases or decreases in behavior, but increase in skills, we are seeing that they are able to be more successful on the academic front, and so, that's been exciting. We just want to expand our pool from nine to more and also to K-12, so. All right, any questions?
Do we have adequate space as far as spaces for students in all three of those programs?
Yes, I would be.
We have adequate teachers, and we aren't, have waiting lists or anything?
We don't have waiting lists in any of those three programs, no. And we do work closely. I know Dr. Hatfield and her team work with us on monitoring student enrollment or student eligibility numbers because based on that, absolutely, we've either added a teacher or TA or things like that in different programs. We watch that, and we, actually, this month, already had some conversations, just making sure we know what our current numbers are.
I had a question on, well, on slide five, and you don't necessarily have to go there, but it's talking about the data-driven decision-making. And this, my question may be out beyond the scope of just this one, but some of the information there you listed was discipline data, monthly analysis, and there were some other more data capture elements in there. Is that something that could be presented to the board? Either as part of this presentation, or we could even talk about it in a work session, but that seems like, because there is focus and we get a lot of questions in that area, it seems like having data in that area that we're looking at to make data-driven decisions would be good.
I will definitely take that down and talk to our team.
Thank you.
Have, now that we've had the Success Academy for a couple of years, have we been able to see a decrease in discipline at the elementary levels by being able to send some of those students to the Success Academy that need those services over there?
I would say when students are, when their behavior is extreme enough and they are not responding to the tier-three plans, knowing that now we have a place where they can go and receive that dedicated, small-class-size wraparound is absolutely beneficial to the student and, of course, to the building because they just don't have the same resources there that the Success Academy does. So, I think the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Onto the Prop RP1 update. Dr. Sligel.
Yes, thank you. First of all, very excited about Prop RP1. Thank you for your approval of that a couple of weeks ago. One of our top priorities of our new strategic plan is a commitment to the recruitment and retention of teachers and staff in the school district. And one of the ways that we identified to help with that was to improve our total compensation structure. In our November work session, we discussed three options the board had for total compensation structure. One option was to do nothing at the current time. The second option was to create capacity by raising the operation tax levy, and the third option was to raise capacity by transferring some current debt service levy to the operation levy for a zero overall net impact to property owners. At the November meeting, we discussed the merits of each option, and you gave us direction at that meeting for an approach that raises capacity for total compensation improvement by transferring some current debt service levy to the operating levy for a zero net impact to property owners. Couple of weeks ago, at our special meeting on January 12th, you approved a resolution that transfers some of the current debt service levy to the operation levy for the April ballot. During our discussions on January 12th, you asked for some clarifying information on what that could mean for future debt service levy. A great question. Should another bond-issue election become necessary in 2027 or beyond? We've worked with Stifel Financial Advisors to address your questions tonight. First, about the long-range facility plan. You know, the board approved that in 2020, and the following items were projected for our facility needs for approximately around the 2027 timeframe. Elementary school number eight, additional career-oriented programming and facility maintenance. We are scheduled to formally review and renew our long-range facility plan in a couple of years. We are doing this on a every-five-year basis to refresh. Dr. Petten Gill is currently conducting an informal review with a subcommittee of our members of our Citizens Advisory Committee. The current trend that we're noticing in that discussion is that elementary school number eight will likely not be needed in the timeframe last observed by the long-range facility plan. However, we're going to reserve on an official statement on that until we have two more years' worth of data, so the next 24 months, we'll undertake a more in-depth analysis. But let's assume three scenarios. Let's assume that all facilities in the current long-range facility plan are needed, and a bond election in, down the road, 2027, of around $50 million was placed on the ballot. Our current projections suggest that perhaps a debt service levy might be needed around that time, about, of about 20 cents. Assuming that not all the facilities in the current long-range facility plan are needed, a bond-issue election of less than 50 million would suggest a debt service increase of less than 20 cents at that point in time. Again, these are four or five years down the road, so there's a lot could happen, but we wanted to answer your questions about what that might mean for our debt service levy. The operative word there is "might" because there are a lot of moving parts in this. Current projections indicate no changes in the debt service levy if a future bond election does not be placed on the ballot in 2027. I think the key thing in our analysis that we found is that if we're able to push some of our facility needs off until a later date, quite possibly, current projections would suggest that there would be a potential, again, for a no-tax-rate bond election in the near future. So, that's not totally out the door. It really depends on timing, needs, situation at the time. A lot of that comes into play. Crystal ball isn't always clear, but certainly, we have managed this in the past and will present the best plan possible moving forward when we're ready for facilities. As we noted in our presentation to you November, moving some of our debt service capacity to the operations side results in a zero net increase to property owners, but could use some of our capacity for the future. The next bond election, like I said, is still several years away. Very confident in this team's ability, future board of education's ability, as well as our help from our financial advisors to navigate this correctly. Be happy to try and answer any questions if you have on that, but I do appreciate the questions from two weeks ago so that we can bring this information to you.
I definitely appreciate it because, you know, I love numbers.
Yes, you do.
And graphs. And so, looking at it, just confirming, when we were looking at the projections, consistent with what we talked about, that we will have to eat into, with the current move, the shift of what RP1 is, we will have to eat into surplus.
Yes.
Cover. And so, that's consistent, and that's consistently shown here. And just one question on here, I'm sorry, I didn't get it to you in advance, but it shows that, you know, we're looking back at the growth rates and what the 2024 growth rate is, is 10%. Is that, it seems like just a number out there?
Yes, that is based upon conversations we've had with Assessor's Office as well as counsel from our financial advisors, and is probably on, maybe on the conservative side.
Okay.
When will these flyers be ready? When will the flyers be ready?
Flyers are ready. Again, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. I failed to talk about a couple of other things. We announced to our community the day after your vote that we are taking this to an election, and so, it was a big celebration that we were able to do that. More information about this election is going to be placed on a website link, which will be live tomorrow, as well as the flyer, which will be our primary conversation piece when we go out and do presentations. There's an entire communication plan that we're working on. There'll be public presentations, presentations made to each school leadership group, and that flyer will be the primary driver of the talking points. And there it is before you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Onto action items. The ninth-grade center furniture bid. Dr. Petten Gill.
Well, I don't know if you've had a chance to drive by the ninth-grade center recently, but it is making leaps and bounds. And I know a month ago, I fielded lots of questions about, are you serious that this is going to open in August? And I'm not getting those questions as much now that we've got a full structure in place. It's enclosed. We actually have permanent heat hooked up as of this week, set on 60 because we do have to pay those gas bills. But, so there's not a lot of excuses. Even today, there was not a rain delay day, so they were able to work right through today. So, once we start getting all this room building put together, we are going to have to have a place for children to actually sit. So, desks, stools, chairs, furniture. It's quite an impressive undertaking to furnish a 92,000-square-foot facility from scratch. Years ago, when we first started all this process, we went through a request for qualifications process and looking for a designer to help us put this together, and we ended up with Scott Rice. And Scott Rice is an interior design company that comes alongside with us, works with HDK and the district. We've been very impressed. You may remember when we went through the furniture package at Lead, and now that you've seen the product, I think you would agree that we were happy with the way that bid came through and the way it came together and working with those experts. Just like that process, when we went through this process for the ninth-grade center, we included tons of students, tons of teachers. It was, it worked out. It's a blessing for the operations side that the administrative team for that building was hired internally because now we get to steal them for all of our meetings and let that principal and assistant principal and some of their staff that we know are coming onboard with them. Because you can, you can have the perfect furniture setup, but if that teacher's chair is not comfortable, you're going to be in trouble, and you're going to get talked about about not doing a good job. So, we're excited that that all came together. We had a great package put together. We stayed within the expected budget, and tonight, we're bringing forth a package. I believe we used six different co-ops, countless vendors that Scott Rice helped us put together, different selections. Of course, the first time around, we didn't hit budget, so then, there's the VE process, that value engineering to get back and said, okay, does this have to be a wooden chair? Can we go to a different plastic chair? But also, maintain some quality and lasting material, and we are very happy with where we ended up with the package that's being presented for your consideration this evening.
Okay, any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the ninth-grade center furniture quotes from Steelcase, Colis, Visent, Smith System, NCPA, Tips, and Omnia in the amount of $847,237.66?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, comments, questions?
Just one quick question. Can you just clarify? In there, it says we utilize five different co-ops. That, co-ops means that it's gone out for competitive bid, and it's the lowest price, right?
Correct. A co-op like Tips or any of the others are partnerships where they do the bidding in advance. Because that way, it allows us, we've already got the lowest bid for this type of furniture, and there's been an agreement, a procurement established so that we can purchase from them and meet all requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. All right, any other questions? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
And if anybody wants to tour at any time, work with Dr. Schlegel, President Johnson, just let us know. I will, we can get out our boots and hard hats and-
I say, we still have hard hats from the ninth grade, they're from the Lead Center.
Thank you.
All right, onto the District WAN, W-A-N, Juan Services bid. Mr. Gooding.
We'll work with that. We'll work with Juan. That'll work. So good evening tonight. The first two bids that I'm presenting are covered under federal E-Rate guidelines, so I'm just going to read a little bit about that in case you're not familiar with E-Rate guidelines, so I don't do it twice. I'm just going to do it once here at the beginning. The E-Rate program provides funds to schools and libraries in the United States to obtain affordable internet access with a focus on delivering internet to the classroom. Discounts depend on the level of poverty, served and arranged from 20% to 90% per district. Our district traditionally, and what we expect to receive, is about a 50% E-Rate discount. So the first eligible project that we're going to do is our wide-area network connection, and this is basically the fiber network that connects buildings in our, in our district together so we can share data, have internet access, copiers, phones, everything that takes data across the district. This is basically kind of, if you wanted to think of a human body, these are kind of the arteries that are connecting buildings together. So really, really important decision that we're making for our partner tonight. And the buildings in specific that we're talking about are Peculiar Elementary, Shoal Early Learning Center, the high school, South Middle School, Academy, and the ACS Academic Service Center. So basically, this campus is what we're looking at right now. So currently, we lease several miles of fiber, basically all of our fiber around the district from a company called Unite Private Network. And we've leased with them since they built our network. So since the 90s, we've been working with Unite and building out our network, basically one building at a time, one portion of our district at a time. So we've, as we've moved through this, we've had several different leases with Unite. And so when I, when I came on, we had, I want to say we had five or six different leases. And so we've slowly worked to get back to now where we have two leases. And eventually, we'll get to the point where we have one lease, and I'll talk a little bit about that later, and we can do even more competitive bidding when that happens. But the district lease for these buildings requires a payment right now annually of $84,054, and it concludes on June 30th of 2023. So we conducted the RFP process through E-Rate and USAC, so it's a nationwide bidding. And we received five bids, which is many more than we've ever received in the past. And I, I think a lot of that is that we've taken the time to start bundling buildings together, so it makes more sense for people to put more money into it and bid for it because it just makes, one building doesn't mean a lot, but if you can do a lot, a lot of buildings, it's just worth more money and you get more interest. So we went ahead and went with a 12-year lease, and I'll just explain that really quickly because that seems like a really random number, but 12 years is what we need. Our next set of leases end in 2025. So right now, we have two sets of leases. Our next set ends in 2025. The plan is that these will be 12-year. In 2025, we'll bid it out for 10 years. And then at that point, we will finally have our entire network onto one program where we can bid it all out together and should be even more competitive than it is right now. So we received five bids, like I said, and our recommendation is that we go with Bluebird Network on that 12-year lease to provide the fiber to those, those buildings at a cost of $32,400 annually. That's perfect. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And we anticipate getting 50% E-Rate on of the 32,400?
Correct.
Ryan, are we going to have issues because we'll have, I mean, we talked about this, half with Unite for-
Yes.
-half?
So, you know, if I had my, my preference, I would love to have everything underneath one vendor because that gives you one person to call. One of the benefits that I didn't talk about, Bluebird's, their network is going to be entirely underground right now. About well over 70% of our network is on poles, so it's above ground. And so this will be a benefit for us as well, provide just another layer of protection against bad weather. You know, we've had squirrels chew through fiber, we've had mowers mow over fiber, everything you could possibly think of, we've had. And whenever that happens, causes major outages in our district. So having it buried will be nice. But yes, there is a possibility of some finger pointing possibly about whose fault it would be or who needs to come out. We have some equipment, though, that is pretty effective in being able to tell the distance and how far down the fiber that the break would be. And since these are specific buildings, we should be able to have a pretty good idea of what, what we are able to connect to and what we're not able to connect to. So my answer is yes, but I think it's very manageable.
So this is going to require all new fiber lines out there?
Yes.
Is that included in the 32,400?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All right, is there a motion then to approve a 12-year lease in the amount of $32,400 annually with Bluebird Network to provide fiber connections to Peculiar Elementary, Shoal Early Learning Center, Raypack High School, South Middle School, the Academy, and Academic Service Center?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Now on to the CAT6 Plenum Cabling Bid.
Right on, okay. So the second project, the second E-Rate project I want to talk about is the recabling of the high school. And we're specifically talking about those areas that were not renovated in 2016. So in 2016, we did a lot, we renovated several areas that were not brand-new, but we went in and changed some things out, so that's not included in this. And luckily for me, the PAC, building the PAC provides an opportunity at the high school that you do not see very often. We're not going to have kids in the high school, which, during the summer, which is like, I, I, this will be the first summer since I've been here that I can remember the high school being totally empty. So we're going to take advantage of it and get some work done over there. As we've continued to improve our infrastructure and upgrade our equipment and buildings, it's important that we keep the wiring up to date as well. So like I said, this is going to focus on those areas that were not touched by the renovation, and most of that cabling can be dated back to the late 1990s, maybe early 2000s. So it's, it's definitely aged. Obviously, the new cabling is going, going to address performance issues that we have in the high school and help with the ever-increasing load that we put on our network every single day with our students. So we conducted this RFP as well through the E-Rate process and did it across the country through the USAC web portal. And we received three bids for this one. And tonight, we're recommending Yellow Dog Network for the purchase and installation of cabling and fiber to the high school in the amount of $93,724.40.
Any comments, questions? All right.
Where, where is Yellow Dog located?
Overland Park. Overland Park, local, yeah, they're local.
Are they all named after animals?
All of them, yes. No, I don't know.
They are always consistently one of the cheaper bids coming in.
Yes, they have done, they have done the majority of our cabling projects, summer cabling projects, they are, they are very competitive. We've been really happy with their work, so.
Okay, is there a motion then to approve the bid for the purchase and installation of cabling and fiber at Raymore Peculiar High School from Yellow Dog Networks in the amount of $93,724.40 with an expected reimbursement of $46,862?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? All in favor? Yellow Dog passes unanimously. Onto the Flat Panel Displays Bid.
Okay, in kind of that same, that same thing, taking advantage of not having people in the high school, this gives us a chance to go in and change out the AV in the high school for those areas that also did not get new things during that renovation of 2016. So this is actually ahead of schedule, so some people at some middle schools are going to be disappointed because it was going to be their year. But like I said, the opportunity to work in a high school with nobody in it is, no summer school, no anything, is too big of an opportunity to pass up. So we are going to take advantage of that and we would like to replace 46 interactive flat panels at the high school. Again, we sent this out to bid. We had three people that came through and bid on it. One of the three was just bidding on the installation alone, so two other vendors that, that bid on it. KCAV, we've done work with installing these TVs in the past, so we're comfortable with them as well. So tonight, recommend the purchase of 46 ClearTouch Interactive Flat Panel Displays with installation, professional development, and a five-year onsite warranty from KCAV for $195,309.61. And I know when you look at that bid spec and you look at those numbers, you're thinking, how does he get to $195,309.61? And I checked my math multiple times. We are looking at the 75-inch TVs on the bottom and, I don't have that number right in front of me, but I think it was 38 next to that. Anyway, so we are, and then we are doing all of the others, so the installation, the professional development, everything else. And then we are also buying additional, whatever the difference is, I'm going to get six TVs, those additional six, 65-inch TVs that are going to go on carts, and we're going to use those in carts in the high school. And we're also going to take a couple of those, of those over to the freshman center. So when you add that up, it comes to $195,309.61, which I checked multiple times, especially before I got here, up here, so.
Thanks.
Yep. Be happy to answer any questions about that as well.
All right, is there a motion to approve the bid for 46 ClearTouch Interactive Flat Panel Displays with installation, professional development, and a five-year onsite warranty from KCAV for $195,309.61?
I have a question, actually. Is there a reason why you have 45 balance boxes and we're buying 46?
There is.
Okay, just making sure before you approve the, to the penny.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. I can tell you if you really want to know, but-
No.
No, okay.
Helping you out. Check your math here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? I will say the thought of a 65-inch TV on a cart sounds nervous.
Oh, they're, no, they're nice.
Okay.
They're, they're good carts.
All right, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gooding. All right, on to committee reports. Citizens Advisory met and they were happy to see that we had approved the bond initiative. And then they started looking, levy transfer, I'm sorry, levy transfer. And then they started having their first look at school branding. What does that look like, perhaps a logo or something with HTK leading the discussions? So that was some interesting input and some of the, the history came out in discussions and it was a great conversation to get started. And then Team Raypack met and their main discussion this month was having more discussions on next year's calendar and all that that entails and the good, the bad, the ugly, all the above.
Surveys out there?
Yeah, and the surveys for parents are out now. And please, everyone, do the surveys because they really do look at them and take that into consideration. Any other committees met? All right, on to the superintendent's update.
Thank you, I have a couple of things tonight. First of all, both the board updates for the month of January thus far are now going to be attached to our board docs. And I know you've taken a look at them, so I won't rehash them. I will want to, I do want to point out that tomorrow night, I will be at a legislative recognition event in Blue Springs, meeting with our area representatives, thanking them for their service and talking and hearing about all the many wonderful things happening in Jefferson City. So it'll be an opportunity to get some additional information about some of the bills that are currently circulating through the State House.
All right, on to the strategic plan update.
Yeah, just a minor update there. The mid-year review is attached to the agenda item. It gives you the work that has been done thus far and meeting our action steps to accomplish year one of our goals. This is the document that you'll be reviewing later privately with me, but I wanted to make sure it was displayed for the public to see as well.
Thank you. Board of Education comments?
I've just had some very, very good, positive feedback on the collaboration days from a lot of teachers that just really appreciate it. Also, talking to a lot of parents that might not have been as onboard at the beginning, but now really appreciate the consistency of that. Had some, you know, concerns with some of the younger kids trying to get into a routine. As it's winter, there is no routines and you're going to get, you know, snow days. But very good, positive feedback for the, the collaboration days and have started getting discussions on the, the transfer and what does it mean and some of the questions. So again, I think some education information that will go out will be very helpful for them as we're trying to explain why we can transfer the money, get the teachers where they need to be, and continue to have to have those discussions. It's not a one and done.
Correct. I appreciate you saying that's a key point in this overall conversation as we move forward, so thank you.
All right, on to calendar of events. Next work session is February 9th at 6:00 p.m. Next regular board meeting is February 23rd, 6:00 p.m. close, 7:00 p.m. open. And if there's nothing else, we are adjourned, recessed to closed. Thank you all for being here.